Thanks.
It's next to the loss of the regional meeting or council meeting that has started earlier. All right, we're here. Today, we recognize the initial act of the holder showing either the matter of wonder as a contrary of consent for the defenders of the great town or island with its waters and its winds. We honor their long history and welcoming others to this beautiful territory. Our aim is to uphold and uplift their voices and values as our host nation. Uh, we have some business coming out of closed session and I will turn it over to the councilman Parker.
Uh, the council reconvenes open session at six P M. and reports the following from the close uh, closed meetings to the public. Uh, the council received fair information or bar C L D O P D twenty five dash zero zero one. Telsenberg Customer Service Center Design, Build and Renovation. And direct staff report back in open session at a future meeting with a comprehensive report including meat belt costing. And the proposed design for Customer Service Center Design, Build, Renovation. And the council received fair information or bar C L D C A R twenty five dash zero zero A. Communications from an identifiable individual. And report C L D G D M twenty five dash zero one five and offer to purchase. Fortune of ground lease lands Harvey and report C L D C A L twenty five dash zero zero seven transfer Telsenberg by your employees. And the council provided direction with staff.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Same now, calls in favor. That is caring adoption of the agenda, Council of Parson.
Through bipartisan, my counsel Lucy Andy, that the agenda best prepared for the council meeting of Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty five be adopted.
Questions or comments? Calls in favor. Hearing disclosures of key area interests, I'm going to turn it over, turn it over to councilor Lucian.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, any disclosure to key areas, like generally, there are. Very amazing.
Thank you on that for lazy uh, to third key area interest in regards to agenda items thirteen point eight point one of the agenda. For the above noted meeting today for the following reasons, that has been as ownership and building located in the V I A form. Thank you.
Any other exposure to information impressed, uh, Captain Mayor?
I'd embarrass uh, have key area interest in regards to item thirteen point eight point one. The agenda for the above noted meeting for the following reason, family member has property in the V I A area.
Thank you. Or another, uh, councilor, sorry.
Thank you. I also have a conference of thirteen point eight one. Uh, the B I A member is understanding for uh, the meeting that I have on the downtown side.
Any other disclosures? For the meeting that the chair back of the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. And just, um, I'll ask. In general, if there are any other fair interest, and I don't think there are. Next we move to adoption, councilman next, councilor Lucian.
Yeah, move on. I saw a certain councilman Parker, the next, the council meeting of November twenty four, twenty twenty five, do you approve?
In years, our missions. Calls in favor. Hearing. Now you enter presentations, we have in town or we have town insurance provider. And the welcome for all. The regional manager, Kinsop Laston, I'm hearing. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, thanks for having me here tonight. To the soft change and some information, general information on your sure. So just kind of quick summary here, what is insurance? Insurance is a spread of risk. Um, the way I like to put it in simple terms is. We have a pool in somebody's backyard. Got to fill that pool with money to a certain level. Pay the risk of all the favors. Um, in simple terms, that's exactly what we do. So you, as our insurer. Can you entrust us with your funds? Pay your claims uh, or losses that are covered in the policy, pretty, pretty straightforward. So. Uh, who are we in our public entity? We've been, we were formerly known as Frankton Company. We've been around almost a hundred years. I think we're three years shy of that now. Um, we're managing general agent. We're one of the, we're unique in the sense that we're one of the only insurers in the province handling municipal insurance where we handle underwriting. We actually issue the policy, we actually handle claims on behalf of our policyholders. And we do, um. Risk management as well. Um, and we have partner companies that we partner with, um, intact being our largest, boys is one in capital. So this is a quick summary of the coverages you'll see, um. Uh, there's various lines of coverage, starting with liability. That's the major one where, um, a lot of your insurance. Uh, premium is generated from, that's where a lot of claims are directed from. That's your. For negligence, if there's something that the town does negligent, this is where this responds in terms of paying awards, but also defending. That's where a major part of the cost, some problems defending from on behalf of town. And I'll skip right to the bottom. It's an excess liability policy for another five million dollars. So that's in excess of the original fifteen million. So that gets us up to twenty million dollars worth of coverage for our general. And again, that's where the bulk of our claims come from. The slip and falls, trip and falls, over claims, that's where we see a lot of that. Um. Sorry, gonna have a hard time just kind of reading that. Right, so that, um, I think next is errors in admission. So that's where we give improper advices. Um, in particular, municipalities, we see that a lot of the building departments where perhaps maybe we gave improper professional advice and that would provide the coverage in switch regards to that. Um, we have environmental pollution, so. Quickly, environmental pollution. So if there's something that causes violent injury or property damage as a result of something that we done environmentally. That's where that policy will pick that up. It also picks up if we violated environmental act. It picks up if there's fines there is, so that's where that comes into play. Um. Sorry, what's it, crime? So that's inside crime, that's crime. Uh, in particular burglary from anything within the municipality. Fraud and fund transfers within the municipality, that's where that type of policy picks up that. Um. Sorry, just had a hard time reading. I can't see it.
Accident.
Oh, sorry, uh, counselors accidents. So counsellors yourself, if you're involved in accident, well on duty in your capacity as a councillor here at the municipality. Um, that provides coverages under there for things like, uh, income replacement during that period, um. Death and dismemberment coverages, and there's a chart of, you know, how much pain would come through that. Uh, nursing care and all and that type of thing, something would happen. Volunteers accident, that's very similar for our volunteers that come and help our municipalities are very similar. The limits are a little bit lower, but in principle, it's, it's the same type of coverage. Um. Sorry. On this straight conflict of interest act, there's resistance. Oh, thank you. There we go. That'll make my life easier. Uh, conflict of interest. So conflict of interest, um, simply the conflict of interest act, if there's a charge against conflict of interest, where I'm not guilty, it picks up the costs. For, uh, defending for that conflict of interest. So that's, that's pending an actual charge against the conflict of interest, so. In the act, um. Legal expense, so legal expense is for statute law, um. So if there's something barring statute law, then we have a charge and there's expenses picked up there. That's where that policy will pick you up. Um. And we have owned auto. So that's all our vehicles. That's simply the vehicles that the municipality owns. And there's various coverages under that, um, from these, obviously, if the vehicle's damaged in an accident, we fix it, um. Try to put it back exactly where it was. Uh, we provide replacement vehicles, we provide, uh, coverage for if an employee involved in an accident with that vehicle, they can elect provide coverage under the accident benefit as fortunate as that happens. And then I just talked about excess liability that adds on. And I also just noted here, maybe even, so one of the key ones that's not listed here is property damage. So that's all our buildings. That's what we have. So there's, I believe, in your policy, it's about eighty two million dollars worth of buildings that are listed upon that. And we adjust that based on inflation and redo inspections of buildings just to make sure those values are adequate. And we have a thing called guaranteed replacement cost. So if it isn't listed exactly what it is, we will replace it to put it back to where it belongs. And then there's an addition to that is a boiler and machine. So that's everything that's inside those buildings. So like ice plants. Anything that makes those, uh, buildings run, heating systems and all that. We have a policy with a limit of fifty million on that as well, so. And those also have separate deductibles as well. So flip the next slide. Thank you. So just a little bit about understanding, how do we get to this premium? That's what everybody wants to know. How do we get to these, uh, dollars that are be charged in municipalities? So really, there's, there's two things. It comes to rate versus premium. So rate is really the math. That's actuaries, the smart, I call them smart people, the people that figure out, okay, what's the risk? And how much should we charge for that risk? And they come up with a rate. So in this example, they come up with a rate of two dollars and fifty cents for one hundred dollars value coverage. So then we, we take that, so we can take a building per se, we take a building that's worth a hundred thousand dollars. If the rate is two, two hundred and fifty cents per one hundred dollars with the value, then we come out with a value for premium of two thousand five hundred dollars. So that's really how we come up with it. So there's the first part is rate. That's what gets set by the underwriting companies. And then we charge up to premium based on the value of the risk that we're taking. So, excellent. So some key factors, um, to understanding underwriting, there's market conditions. So when we talk about market condition, we talk about hard markets, we talk about soft markets. Uh, we talk about a loss ratio. So we talk about losses, claims, expenses, expenses to defend, expenses to run the company versus total premium we took into those expenses. So when I go back to talking about the pool for insurance. How much cash we put in that pool, what level of water did we fill that pool with? As we take all that cash out of that pool, is everything even? Where does that land at the end of the day for that? So that's kind of keep that in mind. And then overall, performance of the collective risk, again, going back to our pool. How did all of the municipalities on our book do? And hopefully. Uh, we keep that within filling that pool of cash. And the thing about insurance, and I'll point it out here is it, which is a bit different to keep in mind is that we're pricing a product um, that we don't know what the expenses are before you have it. So it's not like you have a fixed expense for your normal business and you go in and you go. Well, I know how much my widgets are going to cost for this year, and I know how much my employees are going to cost, and I know all my overhead costs. That's what it is. Insurance is guessing at that. It's a guess. And that's what actuaries do. That's how we get to come up with that rate. So just keeping that in mind. So next slide, please. So soft market versus hard market. So this is a key component because this is the big price maker for insurance. Where do those markets stand? Um, and how does that play with the rate we get? Keeping that in mind. So a hard market, um, one of the major things is catastrophe. We're hearing that these days more and more and more. You know, we see storms, we see fire laws, we see, um. Anything that's catastrophic really affects the insurance market. We're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. We see it on the news all the time. So when we have a series of major events like that, that obviously affects the insurance market because those risk dollars are completing that pool pretty heavily. When we have those instances. Reduced investment return. Insurance, like everything else, every other business, we take money in, we invest that money, hope to make a decent return on. The markets are great, we're making decent returns, we have excess cash. Whereas a premium, when markets aren't so great, less money to invest, not as much cash. So that's a factor on. Inflation, just like anything else, inflation's huge, um. If you have a six percent inflation, obviously it changes everything. In particular with insurance, uh, we have things like when we talk about medical costs, medical cost inflation, but the biggest one, the most obvious one is obviously inflation on buildings. Materials on buildings. That's the big one we see regularly is building costs, labor costs for them. That's a huge incentive. Um. Social inflation. Now, this is a big, big one, uh, especially for municipalities because of the joint several liability rule or the one percent rule you all probably know about. We get hit because all we need to be found is one percent negligence, and we could be on hook for the whole thing. So we're always getting leave. Municipalities are always getting leave. So. When it comes to that. If we get a large court award. And it's called social inflation. That gets reflected in, guess what? The precedent goes to legal counsel and legal counsel, guess what? The next trip and fall, there's guess what happens? Is they're going to chase it and they're going to chase it for that high inflation. So we have to be prepared for those type of rewards. Unfortunately, that's what we have to be prepared for. Nobody has that crystal ball, but we have to be prepared in those cases. So that's a big factor with markets. Um, reinsurance companies, so, um. We deal with, for instance, like Lloyd's of London. But to go up to a higher level of insurance, like access insurance, we might have to go to another company for that. And those companies separate. So if those companies are paying out, like in instances where we have large storms or catastrophic situations, they're paying out a lot of cash. They don't have a lot of cash, they've got to be careful, it's all regulated. It becomes tighter, may become tighter on the risks and how much they want to charge to take on that. So that's a big factor. Um, and then, of course, poor insurance pricing. I'll go back to my pool example. If last year we didn't fill the pool to the right level, or the last few years we didn't fill that pool to the right level, and we overspent what, how much was in that pool? Guess what? We got to come back and recoup those fast somehow. So those are all factors in terms of a hard market. And we've been in a hard market just before COVID. The insurance industry's really been in a longer hard market than normal. Um, just last year, we started to pull out of that hard market. We're seeing a soft market open up. So soft market, um. High capital, high profitability, insurance companies are making money. Uh, it's not so tight that cool, those dollars, we figured out those dollars properly. Uh, reduced claims costs. We haven't had a lot of claims. Last year, we didn't have major storms out West. We didn't, you know, we didn't have the center of the fire dams that we've seen in the last few years. So those mark, those create different market conditions. It's, I, I, I liken it to family budgets. It's no different. Somebody gets a raise, somebody loses a job, it's no different. It's there's more cash flow, there's less cash flow. It's very similar situation with insurance. Um. Obviously, high investment in terms of. If at the markets, the companies are making more money, they have more money, they become more liquid, obviously, they can pass those savings on. Um, your major losses, we talked about that. And, uh. And then what happens, obviously, when it's just like anything else in business, when companies get more aggressive, prices come down. Um, so that's what happens in the softer market, and that's what we're seeing. So companies are more flush with cash. Re insurers are more flush with cash, it comes down, and it raises market status, and it influences back onto the municipalities in terms of the rate we get in terms of premiums. Um, next slide, please. So loss ratio. So really simple, we've kind of talked about it. Loss ratio is our costs and all our claims, the expenses, defense costs, um, versus our premium we took. So this is just a synopsis of the last five years, uh, for Telsenberg. Uh, so you can see our loss ratio, we, we, I marked at the top, start of the hard market, COVID twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, we had a loss ratio of twenty seven percent. And then we had a premium increase of thirteen percent. So the, the hard market started in twenty twenty one, the loss rate was twenty, sorry, twenty six percent. And the premium increases fifteen percent. And we see it gradually coming back, twenty two, a loss ratio is twenty percent, seventeen. And then the loss ratio keeps coming down fifteen, fifteen, seven, and the twenty twenty four, the soft market starts. And guess what? Loss ratio is seven, premium increases eight percent, and then last year, loss ratio is seven, premium increases at four percent. So it just, this is just showing how that hard market affects how the price insurance and how it gets affected the municipalities within our book. And during a hard market, loss ratio, and I'll talk about it a little bit, loss ratio isn't such a significant factor. Uh. Because really, it's that price dictated upfront to us, is how we get that insurance. Loss ratio becomes a bit more of a factor in the softer market, but really, at the end of the day, loss ratio, unless it's over forty percent is not a big factor on your municipal premium. So, next slide. Thank you so much. So. Understanding premium, this is the claims over the last ten years. I just, I pulled up a summary of it. So we've had a total of fifty nine claims. Uh, the total gross claims incurred, this is what we paid. Uh, and just the claims portion is seven hundred and seven thousand and change. The total expenses paid is a hundred and eighty seven thousand, so that's for adjusting fees, lawyers, et cetera. Um. And then I just outlined some of our common claims, and you guys are no different to any other municipality. It's slip and falls, trip and falls, and sewer backs. Those are the common ones we see across the province. There's nothing new here. This is the classic municipal claim. I was a claims adjuster for, uh, fifteen years of my life handling municipal claims. And by and large, slip and falls, the trip and falls, and the, and roads, uh, those are the ones you're going to see, and that falls under that generalized area, and that's why that generalized area is better. So on the right hand side, I kind of outlaid a few of the more, um. Let's say costly claims that, uh, the towns had. So we had a property damage due to storm failure, service failure, sorry, totaling sixty one thousand. You know, totaling, so an errors in admission, sorry, uh, alleged breach of contract, but just defense costs thirty four thousand. So a lot of a lot of our claims costs are in defense, as you can see. Uh, damage to properties due to ice storm, we had thirty four thousand, trip and fall in the parking lot, that was a major one, a hundred and forty three thousand. A child fell from a slide, icy conditions, almost a hundred and twenty. Another slip and fall, arson at the community center. And errors and issues, breach of duty, zoning imperiments at thirty thousand. So I just kind of picked off some of the, the larger ones, just so you get a flavor of what's going on. Um, but by and large, uh, out of back to your staff here, you guys, um, comparatively and in the town um, are doing great with three drastic claims. Honestly, your loss ratio is good, it's coming down. Um, and, uh, moving in the right direction. And inevitably, some of these things, you're just, you're never going to avoid them. It, it's, we can put all the risk management dry. But these things happen, and hence that's why we have insurance on them. It, it's out of control. Sometimes it's just out of our control, but all we can do is try to mitigate what we can. So next, um, slide, we had. So some of the key takeaways for the town, uh, you guys have an excellent loss ratio. I would consider it an excellent loss ratio, so that, as I talked about earlier. Forty percent and below is where we want to be, especially during the soft market. The hard market, it's kind of, like I said, it's out of our hands. It's in the hands of the insurers and the reinsurers. But in the soft market, it kind of moves into your hands, and that's where this forty percent loss ratio threshold really takes place. Um. And I. So during the soft mark, the loss ratio, as I said, plays, at least plays a, plays a minor factor, but again, just, just keeping in, in mind that really, if you really have a good loss ratio. You're going to see an increase just based on our inflationary values on the property. So whether that may be, I think right now it's about four, three to four percent is what we're putting on inflationary. So the expectation is, is that those loss ratios on a soft market, is that your insurance will go up just that value. So that's fifty four percent, that's what we're seeing. And that's what I've seen recently with some of the regulations that are coming through right now, is, is, it's very reflective of the hard versus soft. Next slide. So, um, that said, um, we're here to help, intact public entities, we're here to help. We have a we're very blessed that we have a great risk management department, um. And in fact, uh, the staff, we've been working with your staff, and we provided in October, uh, inspection report on some of the risks. So some of the value add things that we provide. Uh, we do asset valuation or risk inspections of your, uh, your assets, your buildings. Um, so we do that, go through them, uh, we'll make recommendations on things, uh, in terms of, when quote efficiency and whatnot. And what can be done to improve and mitigate any potential losses. So we do that. Roads and sidewalks, we'll do a road and sidewalk assessment, uh, in particular. Uh, you know, sidewalks, we find ones that lift and they're above a certain height, maybe this is what you need to do, maybe shave them or whatever to mitigate those trip and fall. Those things that we see constantly that, um. That will affect your premium eventually if they keep coming through. So we do that, um, driver education sessions, we'll do some risk assessment with that. Um, we'll put, we'll set up a session with them, fleet management, it's the same thing. Uh, we'll make some recommendations with your fleet, uh, based on some of your policies, if you're going to review that and go maybe this is what you should try. It's all recommendation, you don't have to do it. Um, it's simply here to, as a risk management tool to help people. Um. And then, and that's, and, 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 and that's very compliant, you know, maintenance standards, we all know about that. That's a big one. That's a huge one when they came in with the minimum maintenance road standards. Um, so we'll review your policies, um, for instance, you know, how are we keeping records of our maintenance? Why are we keeping records? Where do they go? How is that processed? These are all the type of things that, um. We'll provide recommendations, we'll review, provide recommendations. And with, in particular with that, it's huge because um, and I can speak from my adjusting background, when we have that information upfront, it's super important. It keeps us out of courts and it keeps the cost down, it keeps our legal costs down. If we know that we can properly defend something upfront in the first, you know, couple of months of looking into this matter. Instead of dragging it and finding out we get to court and then your road super's on getting cross-examined about this record and that record. I mean, obviously, that drags out the cost drag, but if we have good records upfront, then we can with the defense counsel and say, here's our records, obviously. This is going to weigh us in, uh, much better, or even a pre-trial judge can look at that for a while, these guys have great records. So that's, that's a big one. So, uh, we work with the staff, uh, to do that, and maybe just look forward there. And then just general municipal education. So years ago, I'll go back to the joint server liability, we've done some seminars on that, you know, the importance of that and trying to understand some of these things. Um. One big topic coming in is timelines with regards to the courts and how they're going to hear things. So that's coming in. There, it hasn't been solidified or hearing, but with regards to times of response to claims. Um, the duties of reporting with claims, that's coming. So these type of things, we're happy to present um, education sessions to staff and council, um, on that. Um, so we do that. Um. Contract issues, this is the big one we do. Uh, we do it as part of our service. Um, so if there's a contract that comes in and we're not sure, from an insurance standpoint or a risk standpoint, um. Fire this off to us and, and we have staff with paralegals, we have work, we've actually had a legal from our staff that will review these contracts and provide comment back to, uh, to the town to say, hey, maybe have a look at this, perhaps this, or provide a sample agreement for this. So we do have that, and that's part of our services. Um, again, I'll go policy and procedure review, I kind of talked about that already. Uh, but we will review your policy procedures. There's something, um, interestingly enough, I had, uh, the other day, I had a a system for a fire track, fire suppression system thing, Drew. And they put that through to us to discuss, is this worth this? Will we save premium on this? How does that affect our insurance? And I put it into both claims, and I put it in underwriting, and I put it into risk management, and I got three different responses, which were excellent. Probably did a great amount of feedback on that for consideration, uh, for that local fire department as to what they wanted to do with that system. So some actually very interesting. And then, um, access to everybody is our risk management center of excellence. So there's, it's a website, login under us. And it has all kinds of information on risk management for municipalities, uh, from our team. Um, and it's available twenty four seven for access. And some pretty insightful and up to date articles about anything they have interest with for your storage minimum for municipalities, and some heads up things as well. I think that's that's it.
Okay, well, that was a lot of information. I'll leave you for our council. Council, Council of Parsons.
Thank you, Rod, for the presentation. Very enlightening. Also, I there, uh, about the claims, uh, experience over the last ten years, and it's sounds impressive, only sixty claims in ten years. And when you, you look at the composite, it's, it costs, costs a million dollars. Um, and, and the words and, and the, and the expense of security defending that violation, that's over sixteen thousand dollars for each one of those claims on average. So my question is, how aggressive? Well, my question is, how aggressive does Impact, the former Frank County company, how aggressive are you in terms of defending? Uh, against paying such claims? Like, yeah, a winter slam, slips and falls are, are one of the biggest, right, in the bottom there, but. Uh, hopefully they're not, they need the six million dollars.
Yeah, no. Yeah, and thank you for that, that question, Counselor, yeah. We are very aggressive, in fact, um, and that is the nice thing we've learned when we were purchased by Intact. I can't remember, recall the number of actual legal staff we have now to consult with, um, but we are very aggressive in. And like I say, the documentation and, and trying to persuade claims from going further. Unfortunately, as we all are at the mercy, we have to defend, I mean, that's. There is no choice. If, if plaintiff counsel proceeds and the plaintiff proceeds, we. So far, we have to defend, and that's where, as we said, we're always tossing through. And then you go to court, and it's like anything else, I mean, we feel we have a good legal position, but the court may not feel we have a good legal positions. It's a matter of the judge and a matter of jury at that day, so, but we are very aggressive in defending, and we do leverage. Um. A, almost a hundred years of experience in this business, B, uh. The extreme knowledge of staff that we haven't been around forever, and we really try to defend our friends uh as best we can.
Just follow up. So, it's good that you're aggressive, and, and uh. Uh, you know, I, I feel better that we're not just simply, someone makes a claim on a slip and fall, and you just pay them out. Uh, someone's investigating, someone's looking for witnesses. So, we're, we're trying to reduce our insurance, also with other mitigation, we talked about, doing assessments with the municipality, but. Uh, you're, you're doing your best to uh investigate all of these claims.
Absolutely, thank you, yes, absolutely. There, there's a, there's a, and again, being a former claims adjuster, there's quite a process to. Involved in investigating municipal claims, and that's kind of why I go back to that paperwork and. Um, staff's doing a great job here, is we can cut things off pretty quick. Um, if plaintiff counsel in some of the, like I just mentioned, some of the uh. Uh, proceedings, the way it's gonna go, and hopefully we'll work on our paperwork in terms of um defendants having to provide documentation a little quicker than they are required to now. So, if we have that documentation, and you know, we can, we're able to put that stuff upfront. To plaintiff counsel a little quicker, then this has the, has a claim line sound, hopefully that's, that's the idea behind it, yeah, I think, yeah, thank you, thank you for your question.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, through to you, Mayor. Um, question, early in your presentation, you talked about liability, a fifteen million dollar maximum, according to what you showed on here. Are, um, are we comfortable in knowing uh that you came up with that figure, or at least the industry came up with that figure, knowing that the courts. Normally don't exceed that number for a claim? Uh, or, or are there times that we could be a little worried that that might exceed it, and, and uh municipalities certainly can't handle that? Or is that a number in the industry that you're quite comfortable?
So, definitely, thank you for that question, yes, but that is our primary limit uh for our policies, the fifteen million. And then, as I mentioned, we have the excess of the five, so essentially, you have the twenty million dollars. And we could explore, if, if you're not comfortable, we've, you know, with that pricing higher, we can go, I mean. We could go in excess of fifty million dollars, if we feel that that's somewhere where the municipality wants to go, obviously there's a cost off to that. In terms of premium dollars, but generally, that's the fifteen million dollars is the start marker. Then we have the excess of five, to get you to the twenty million dollar, but yes. And we'll go back to where I talked about social inflation, that's the market, right, that's, that's where we say, okay, we gotta keep an eye on social inflation, so if you're aware that. Is excess of twenty million dollars, well, we're gonna come out to our clients and say, hey. This is what it's going on, this is the precedence that's out there. We need to really look at moving you guys to say thirty million. We're in excess of, you know, ten million on that, so definitely like, that's, that's the market rate where we're at. For that, thank you.
Is that what I need to smell?
Yeah, that's, that's our standard, our standard, yeah, fifteen and then we say an excess.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? Maybe Council Partner.
Move by myself, second by Council Rose, Council received a presentation regarding understanding, coverage and premium by Rob Fidler of Impact Public Enemies as information.
Any further comments from Council? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wish everybody a very good first one, thank you.
Next, we have um some other meetings, eight point one, request for extension of draft approval plan subdivision. And I will turn it over to your planner, Amy.
Uh, thank you, I'm going to go to Council. So, just to clarify, this is for SB twenty-two dash zero four dash six, and that's for Jean Santa. So, as noted, uh, subject application are requesting an extension to the draft approval of two years. With set to lapse January eleventh, twenty twenty-six, and. The act has requested a two-year extension, which county and town staff are in support of. Then they can have them working towards fulfilling their conditions, and most recently consulting with staff, allowing impact development designs. And completing a geotechnical study. So, as such, staff staff are recommending a two-year extension to January eleventh, twenty twenty-eight. Thank you.
Just a clarification, this is now eight point one, and eight point two are not public meetings. And uh, we will move into our public meetings for April. Okay, just. Sorry, I'm just. Thank you, thank you. And you're finishing everything, and I've, I've just started to have these things. We're going to, okay? We'll.
Councilor, sir. Thank you, move by myself, second by Council Spencer. The council advised Oxford County, town supports a one-year extension of draft approval for a challenge subdivision submitted by Limpdrop. Born for lands described as a charge of lots four and five concession ten, year on town of Tilsonburg. To April twelve, twenty twenty-seven, to grant additional time to satisfy the conditions of the draft plan approval. And registered to the draft plan of starting, thank you.
Okay, she, Robert.
Yeah.
Are you reading the one from page eight point one, probably reading? Eight point one.
You've claimed, I'm, I'm, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
You presented for eight point two.
Yeah. Move by myself, second by Council Partners. Uh, the council advises Oxford County that the town supports a two-year extension of draft plan, draft approval. For a plan of subdivision submitted by Jean Santa, the land described as park and lot, sixteen note fix, plan five hundred, concession five. NTR parts three and four, forty-one R nine six one two, in the town of Tilsonburg to January eleventh, twenty twenty-eight, to grant additional time. To satisfy the conditions of draft plan approval and register with draft plan of subdivision.
Okay, this is eight point two, council, over, stand around, you're good. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Carrie, now we're moving back to eight point one, I'll turn it over to you then.
Thank you, with respect to item eight point one, uh, the applicants are requesting an extension to the draft approval of two years. However, the owner has not made any efforts worth clearing that conditions or completion of the draft approval. Um, as such, staff are recommending one year, the current application, SB twenty-two dash zero seven and. SB twenty-one dash zero seven, have approximately eight hundred units, initially committed for water service services. Um, both applications are in progress, so as such, staff, in order to monitor the water and waste water capacity, I only recommend one year. In order to allow um, it will be some actual incentive effort. So, the recommended extension is to April twelfth, twenty twenty-seven, thank you.
Thank you, is Council on any questions?
Councilor, sorry. Hang on. Thank you, move by myself, second by Council Spencer, the council advised Oxford County, that the town supports a one-year extension. With draft approval for a planned subdivision submitted by Limpdrop, brought for Lance's part of lots four and five concession ten. Year on town of Tilsonburg, through five twelve, April twelve, twenty twenty-seven, to grant additional time. To satisfy the conditions of draft plan approval and registered to draft plans, certainly.
Thank you, any further comments from Council? All those in favor? Okay, Mary. Next. Next, we move to your public meeting, this is a public meeting, how to do the planning. For the purpose of hearing an efficient plan of imminent application, OP twenty-five ninety-seven. Incentive application be twenty-five dash four and seven, and zone change applications that is seven two five one. This process allows any person and defendant the opportunity to make a presentation to council. I'll turn it over to Amy, who will give us an overview of the application.
And so, we from section item eight point three, application is proposing to sever three designated and resum proportion of subject lands to facilitate the development of church. The lands are proposed to be rezoned to a major institutional to promote use. Subject lands are located on the east side of Granary Road, municipally known as twenty Granary Road. The lands are currently vacant and designated as low density residential and zone for future development. The application was circulated to a member of staff in the agency, the town of Tilsonburg Engineering Department, requested review of conditions of the severance application. In the Oxford County Public Works Department, there was no concern to the proposal. And advised servicing is being extended to a secondary property as part of the Granary Road revision. One letter of opposition was received from the public, knowing that the proposed development is not in the best interest of the neighborhood. Staff have reviewed the, have reviewed the proposed development and planted planning policy, and are satisfied that the proposed development is not anticipated to can impact. Any of the retained or surrounding lands for residential use. The tract will be directed to an existing material road, and is anticipated to be limited to seven days, and some smaller galleries during the lead days. It is intended, intended, that the proposal will comply with terms provisions at the major institutional zone, and the compatible surrounding land leases. As such, staff are recommending that Tilsonburg Council support the application for official land management and severance. And approves and goes for assumption job petition, subject to any questions, that is number four, thank you.
Welcome forward to the Council, any questions? We're not seeing anyone. Is there anyone present in first favor, surely, that would like to speak in favor of the application, Mr. Rowe, the lessons?
Oh, I'm David Rowe, the agent, the planner for the uh, uh, proponent of the church, Theo. Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, my name's Theo Valverde, and I'm a member of Hope Reformed Movement. And also one of four on the building committee. And I just wanted to say before I hand it over today, that we are super happy to be here. We've been working on this for well over a year, and uh, so there's been a fair amount involved into it, and so we're glad we're at this state.
Yeah, most of the times, I've actually been dealing with the school board in the province of, uh, to get, to get their blessing to allow the name to be sold. Uh, we're here ready to answer any questions, and Theo, in particular, related to anything structural with the, with the church. But I will say, uh, uh, as a planner, and having been a planner for quite a few years, uh, it's. Pleasant to see uh a church being proposed within an urban community. Uh, traditionally, churches, as you know, don't usually have a lot of money, and they look for a nice spot out in the agricultural area. Then we've got to deal with all of the provincial policies, dealing with the farm plan and such, but. In this particular case, uh, the church is actually, fortunately, within the settlement area, and uh. The policies all line up, and like, we thank Amy for her assistance with this as well, she's a great person to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, it's good to hear. Uh, is Council having questions? We're not seeing any, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else with a speaking favor of the application? Anyone registered? Is there anyone present in person, or virtually, that would like to speak in opposition of the application? Anyone registered? Any further questions from council members? Councilperson, go on.
Move through, move by Barson, second by Council Lucy Ann. The council advised the county, the county council, town supports. The application to amend the official plan submitted by uh Ten Valley District School Board, for Hope Reformed Church. For lands legally described as part of lot three concession ten, year on, in the town of Tilsonburg. To facilitate the creation of a lot and development of a community facility, church on subject lands. Two, and further, the council approving principle, the zone change application. Submitted to Ten Valley District School Board, where lands legally described as part of lot three concession plan in the town of Tilsonburg. To resume the lands to major institutional zones, to facilitate a place of worship on subject lands. Three, and further, the council advised the Oxford County Land Division Committee, that the town supports the application for consent. B twenty-five dash forty-nine dash seven, submitted by Ten Valley District School Board. For lands described as part three concession ten in the town of Tilsonburg, subject to the following conditions. One, the owners shall covenant and agree to satisfy all requirements, financial and otherwise, of the town of Tilsonburg. Regarding the installation of services and drainage facilities to the satisfaction of the town of Tilsonburg. Any work being done in the town's right of way will require an encroachment permit. And full-time inspection by the owner's consultant for the entire duration of work of any work being completed at the town's right of way. The owners shall agree to submit a sealed letter to the town of Tilsonburg from the consulting engineer. Saying that all servicing and restoration work has been completed to the town of Tilsonburg Development Guidelines and Design Criteria. Two, the owners shall submit a lot grading plan and site servicing plan for the proposed several lot to the satisfaction of the town of Tilsonburg. Engineering Services Department. Three, the owners shall submit a surveyor's real property report to confirm lot sizes and building setbacks. To the satisfaction of the town of Tilsonburg. Four, the owners shall provide payment of cash in lieu of our plan to the town of Tilsonburg for the lot to be severed. As per the Tilsonburg Rights and Teas by Law, as amended, to the satisfaction of the town of Tilsonburg Engineering Services. And five, the clerk of the town of Tilsonburg advised the Secretary Treasurer of the Land Division Committee, that all requirements of the town of Tilsonburg have been complied with. Thank you.
Thank you, any further comments from Council? All those in favor? Nevada's Carrie, congratulations. And next, we move to our delegation. Is it Matt? Just, you're serious, I'm, but I think he's like, welcome. Who was talking, we're very clear, Aaron.
Members, council, uh, thank you very much for having me today. Uh, my name is Matt Kennedy, I'm with Starline Energy. Uh, the proponent for the Tilsonburg Battery Energy Storage, uh, here today with a request for municipal support resolution, support of. The Tilsonburg Battery Energy Storage Project. Um, I'm just gonna give a quick overview and recap of, of the project at a high level for everyone to refresher, and then get into some of the action items that were discussed at the last meeting there. Um, so what, what is being proposed is, is a seventy plus million dollar private investment in critical infrastructure in the town of Tilsonburg. Made a hundred percent by Starline, including interview fund. This project would help defer near-term capital expenditures required by the town of Tilsonburg and Tilsonburg Hydro. It would have had the potential to unlock significant industrial and residential growth potential, as the community continues to grow. So, we'll pay up to six hundred thousand dollars to the town over the twenty-year life of the project, and create well-paying construction and maintenance jobs for years to come. As a high-level recap of the November uh tenth meeting, we responded to a number of questions about impact on the grid capacity. Noise mitigation, the form of community benefit agreement, the choice of site and condition. Uh, in terms of the impact on grid capacity, uh, it can really unlock sign- significant additional grid capacity at peak times. Uh, currently, Tilsonburg has a capacity of about a hundred and eleven megawatts. And at peak times in the summer, during the eight times, there's really only, you know, less than ten megawatts remaining on that. This would have the potential to add an additional thirty hours, uh, thirty megawatts uh of passing during that time. Um, in terms of the choice of site, uh, really, we, we start to say that's an industrial zone, close to a connection line, and not on private agriculture. In addition to that, we're, you know, very close to the Tilsonburg transfer station, as well as a concrete um manufacturing plant there, that typically does make more uh. Noise than, than the battery energy storage systems. Um, in addition to that, uh, council, uh, in the, in the deferral of the uh, the municipal support resolution, asked for a few things, that we provide a public presentation. Any consultation, provide a report and analysis for comment, including the fire chief and Tilsonburg Hydro. In consultation, provide a report and analysis for comment, including the fire chief and Tilsonburg Hydro. They provide council with more ISO data and information on other existing systems. And finally, the Tilsonburg Hydro Board of Directors receive this as information. So just where we've been there since then is we advertised and held an open house. We have spoke with the local fire chief, provided better to staff, county provided additional ISO data and sample projects, and spoke with Tilsonburg Hydro on impacted project on the THI distribution system. So on the public engagement open house, we held an open house on November twenty sixth at the Tilsonburg Community Center. We notified and received acknowledgement. November eighteen of the date of location and requested that the town promote the event. We advertised in the November twentieth edition of the North Pole and also Tilsonburg News. We delivered over a hundred and fifty flyers on November twentieth for the nearest neighbors. On the slide there, you can see the area highlighted in yellow is where we put those flyers. The open house was attended by four residents, Mary Go Vazey, councillor Roseard, and Derek Pitt from THI. On the next slide, I'll go through some of the common questions that we received there. One was on firefighting training. Who does this? Who pays for this? Skyline Energy will fully fund the creation of a comprehensive site specific emergency response plan developed in partnership with Energy Safety Response Group, who is a group of firefighter like group that specializes in battery safety. There was a question about the exclusion zones during a battery energy storage fire. So incident commanders make decisions based on the fire conditioners, conditions, weather, control zones. And in the emergency plan can include those guidelines. Where the site's located, more than two hundred meters away from any of the closest residents would be, you know, outside of that zone. Local jobs, will there be local jobs? Well, investment at this scale will create any local construction jobs. We spoke with the union members. And also several local suppliers will be needing materials, civil and aid materials, medium voltage, and so on. What happens if skyline is not around? We go bankrupt. We go away. What, you know, support or what comfort does the community have? But this project will go on. Well, really, it's three things. Is one, skyline's been around for more than twenty five years, well capitalized and creditworthy. Second is skyline must propose financial security with the IESO. The IESO has the ability to draw on that financial security throughout the life of the project or at the end of a project, which could go towards decommissioned. So you won't be left with the site there. That money's put up upfront. And third is this project will have secret vendors. If the owner gets into financial trouble, the banks will have contractual rights and financial incentive to keep the project alive by either taking it, taking it over and selling it to a new opponent at that point. Another question was on the noise. Are they going to be able to hear the batteries? Will it impact, impact that? And through our use of a third party consultant, we had an acoustic engineering report built and concluded that it will need all standards as any residents in the vicinity of the project. There were some questions on low tonal noises that go along with that, and we confirmed with the residents that that is taken into consideration in that north report as well. Another concern was around the lighting. Is this going to be lit up at night? Is this really going to impact? You know, are they going to be able to see it? And what happens if we do light it up at night? Well, I can tell you that this will not be lit up at night. That does not go into the day to day operation of this site. There was really no need for lights unless there's a corrective maintenance event that needs to be carried. And obviously, we're lighting would be required at that point, but really no, no lighting or light pollution at all. And finally, insurance, will this impact, one, the value of their homes? Will their home insurance values go up? And we are not aware of evidence of any code compliant properly operated electrical facility in an existing industrial park that's ever raised home insurance in the area. Moving on to fire safety, we did speak with the fire, the fire chief to clarify that this will comply with all fire regulations, stick to it and keep up with the most recent fire standards there are. It includes automatic detection and suppression suppression within those units. Moving forward, we will keep an open dialogue with the chief and the team to ensure that the site plan meets all fire department requirements, things like access, water supply, et cetera. Finally, this guy will support volunteer fire department by collaborating on site specific emergency response plans and facilitating battery fire training. We will pay for that. That is all on, on guidelines with built in the skyline project costs. ISO data and example projects. We did provide a letter that cited ISO sources to show that battery energy source is essential to maintaining the reliability of the electricity system in the face of growing demand. It can help alleviate local grid constraints. It's widely deployed in Ontario. ISO has already awarded twenty five projects with over twenty five hundred megawatts or ten thousand ninety watt hours of capacity in locations across the province. In addition to that, we did highlight some example projects from Ontario, including a very similar fifty megawatt battery energy storage system in a light industrial area in Windsor plus some US projects in light industrial areas near homes. In addition to that, I just saw that Woodstock did approve a or give a municipal sport resolution for a project very similar to ours. It's actually closer to residential neighborhoods. So we are starting to see this in the grounds of base of permits. ISO is engaging with municipalities about this RFP process, and we provided that information as well. Finally, Tilsonburg Hydro, we did speak with Tilsonburg Hydro to confirm the battery energy storage will be a net benefit to the system. I think initially it was, there were some concerns around whether this would have a negative impact on new businesses coming in. In reality, it will actually alleviate capacity issues during those peak loads. The battery energy storage will materially support load growth in the area without additional THI investment at this time. There's sufficient capacity to charge at night. We were able to confirm that. And that this again would defer extremely costly near term operations to the Tilsonburg TS. In summary, we are, you know, excited about the opportunity to invest over seventy million dollars in this, in this project in the town of Tilsonburg. We feel it solves an expensive near term grid problem and unlocks growth potential and save no interest in customers or taxpayers' money. Pays up to six hundred thousand to town over twenty years and creates big pain in construction and maintenance jobs. So in closing, here today to request the municipal support resolution. And I want to sort of really highlight that this does not supersede planning approvals or permits. And, you know, if we're able to move forward, we will continue to work with municipality on official plan amendment, zoning by law amendment, building permits, and a community benefit agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold them or to council for questions? Council, any questions? Is there any loss? Like when power is produced, is usually a loss over the transmission line? Is there a loss? I guess from the battery, the batteries, like the loss, I don't know what to follow, but then you know what I mean?
Yes, absolutely. So when, when the power is facing, goes into the batteries and put back on the grid, there will be some form of loss. We oversize the batteries to make sure that that's accounted for in our design. So we'll sit in the grid, we'll be at thirty megawatts.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing the council partner?
Do you hear it all easy? I had the opportunity to attempt to find the current facility in Oldham County. Took me about an hour to locate it on site, figured out because the address is not listed and where it was extremely difficult. So I did take a tour over there last week. When I attended that site, I noticed a large generator that was there and it ran the whole time that I was there. Is that something that is running constantly at your facilities? I know that's not your facility specifically. And I know that there, I believe, it's still being worked on out there, but there was a constant sound the whole time that I was out there.
So when, when the local grid infrastructure goes down, you will need a generator. There is not a generator that will be sitting on site. The only time you would basically have that in place is if the entire grid was down and you needed to keep the batteries on, essentially, to keep them powered. So our strategy for that is we do not have a generator on site. If something like that happens, we will have a generator in our, at our shop that we can bring out and run.
Oh, oh, where would your shop be located?
We have a facility in Purvis Hunter.
Any questions to the business owner? No, I'm seeing them. Oh, councilors, no, sorry.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. We've received, council members have received a lot of correspondence on this. It seems like you've advertised lots. I was surprised to see only four people there. You stated that there was fifty in Ontario in the report. And I'm just wondering what kind of issues, if any, have you had with those fifty? And if this is a repeat question to somebody, I went offline briefly. Sorry.
Um, I think there's been twenty five awarded, just to clarify that. I haven't heard of any recurring issues. I'm not aware of any. Really, the biggest operating site is the Oneida project that councillor Parker visited. That's really the largest kind of flagship project in Ontario at this point. Up to twenty five, most of those are still under development right now and have not been commissioned.
Okay. You stated, these are the concerns mostly that I heard, light and noise, and you addressed those. And the fire chief and the THI manager, and it seems like they both said thumbs up or said benefits. You talked about the jobs. In a lot of the letters we've received, they're talking about lithium ion and what you guys are doing is very different than that, right? It's a lithium iron phosphate or an LFP. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so some people have even said risk of cancer, but I couldn't find anything online with risk of cancer or environmental pollution. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I, I'm not aware of any, you know, immediate concerns or challenges with these batteries that could increase the likelihood of that. To speak to the technology of the lithium iron phosphate batteries, really it's a different technology than the batteries that are in, in our phones, or you see some of the horror stories of the the electric bikes lighting on fire in elevators and things like that. This is a different type of battery. It's not widely used in things like cars and bikes and cell phones because it's, it's larger, it's heavier. But a couple comes with that is it's more stable. So it is a lot safer battery, a lot lower risk, fire risk associated with it. And at this time, I'm not aware of any, you know, concerns that that could cause, you know, the health of the local, local residents. I haven't heard of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Would be out here. What percentage of securities are usually required for a project?
It is required as a twenty thousand dollars per megawatt per year. So it would be a essentially a six hundred thousand dollar security cut up. And that, that exists for the life of the project.
That security is for the decommissioning, the plan at the end, so which is twenty weeks.
That's correct. And they can also use it for different issues throughout the life of the project as well.
You got any thoughts up and running? There are twenty five approved in Ontario, but they're all just basically in the critical stage. That's basically where they're at. That's correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, any further council persons?
Please, another question, your worship, please comment. Okay.
Sure, we can wait till the resolution. Or a comment. So there's no more questions? Maybe I have one question since you, our manager was mentioned a few times during the presentation is here tonight to need clarify how capacity and how to first capacity.
Thank you, Mary Go Vazey. So in terms of deferment capacity, without an engineering study, it's really hard to define exactly what that timeframe is. But there's, it's certainly a benefit to the local system to have thirty meg's of battery storage to the system. However, currently we're in IRP process, which is regional planning, so we're referring to that with the independent electricity system operator. They're showing that the Tilsonburg TS is beyond its capacity, probably next to the plan starting for the next TS. So a TS is going to take five years to find and unveil. It's going to happen regardless of the battery storage. Will it be able to be reduced in terms of the size of the transmission station? Possibly, but that's too soon to know. But regardless of transmission station, of transmission.
All right. Any further questions? Council or partner?
I'm going to be reading amended resolution. Moved by myself, seconded by Debbie. Council received a delegation from Matt Kennedy and wrote passing of Skyline Energy regarding the proposed battery energy storage system as information. And the council is not in support of Skyline Energy hosting the best project by Skyline Energy at this time. Love to speak to that, Mary Go Vazey. At this time, I have safety concerns. I know that we have heard all the positives about this project. When I witnessed, I looked at the project which we developed involvement, it's not near any housing. It's out in the middle of nowhere with one industrial facility, inferior oil work side of it. And really looking at the cost and what the community is going to benefit from it, it barely moves the needle. So I, right now, I can't support it. Maybe in the future, once this technology comes online and we see more in operation in this in our area, I think it, it might be something that we can look at. Regardless, we've already heard from the, already heard that we do need a new transfer from our station regardless of when it happens. So we are going to have to invest that money and be the fighting canvas. So I'll leave my comments at that and that'll be up for council.
My comments, what I call, councillor Parker, thank you. That's all.
Any others?
Second, or the motion, I just wanted to make it clear. I think one of the key parts in there is at the present time, and this might be something we would would consider in the future, but at the present time, I know I had asked a question earlier on one of your previous presentations about why you chose us as a host community. I wasn't quite satisfied with that answer, and I thought a rural area would probably more in line with it, especially with the the, you're so close to a residential area where you are, and the unknowns are scaring me for the amount of return on it. So that's why I seconded the motion, but I think the key there is maybe our door might be open in subsequent years. My comments.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? I'll call alone, all is in favor? The post? Carry. Next, we move to information items. Councilor Parker?
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Roseard. The council sees the following as twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three, and twelve point four, commissioner.
Council has any questions regarding any of this information items? For any comments? See none, all is in favor? Carry. Corporate services? We move to the general reassurance report. And we'll turn it over to the director of finance if you have anything you would like to highlight.
Thank you, Governor Mayor. This report is just as a follow to council's resolution, request for staff to prepare a founding report in advance of the budget about the running rehabilitation claims or review, which was done as part of the presentation today. So it's just a simple intervention.
Thank you. Any questions?
To your worship, to the director of finance. My question is if the public, if the citizens of Tilsonburg, any citizens in Tilsonburg has a an interest or wants to find out particulars of a, where the town of Tilsonburg may have been involved with a tribunal, a lawsuit, for example, how, how do they get that information? They have access to it? It's a freedom of information. Is it freedom of information or or how does one? I've been asked, and I'd like to give them advice as to how they proceed on that. Thank you.
That's for the American Council. Certainly, ours in public can use the freedom of information process. And request will be processed in funds with the National Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act.
Thank you. Their request would go to the first department.
Good work.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing none, who else you rose to?
Thank you. Moved by myself, and second by Council Spencer. That report, C S twenty-five dash zero one nine, titled Twenty Twenty-Five General Terms for Partly Received Information. And then turn program presentation be intact, public entitled Be Received as Information.
Further comments from council? All is in favor? Harry. Next, we move to item thirteen point two point two, Establishment of Bylaw Appeals Committee. And is there anything that needs to be highlighted in the report?
For you, the council, the purpose of this report for today is to establish a consolidated bylaw appeals committee to your staff for possibly traditional, you know, center town bylaws. Specifically to replace outdated and inconsistent Hill Committee structures within current town bylaws and ensure that we respond properly and improvise the statutory statute procedures act requirements when we did receive this.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding the report? Council Rose, sir.
Thank you. Moved by myself and second by Council Parsons. A, that report, C S twenty-five dash zero three five, title Establishment of Bylaw Appeals Committee to receive as information. B, that council authorized the establishment of a bylaw appeals committee to hear appeals in accordance with the Statutory Power of Procedure Act, reveal relevant town bylaws and adopt correspond establishing bylaw. And C, that the necessary amendments to animal control bylaw, one twenty-one dash zero one through business licensing bylaw, three six six six, and property standards bylaw, twenty twenty-three dash zero four nine, be brought forward, removing the outdated committee structure, referencing the bylaw appeals committee, and aligning appeal submission timelines for consistency. And D, that the following three members of council be appointed to the bylaw appeals committee, Chris Parker, Saul Parsons, and Pete Luciani, thank the volunteers.
Okay, so we're gonna get nods from the three of you. You're all accepting, okay.
Boom.
Any comments or any comments from council? Seeing none, all is in favor. And congratulations to our three volunteers. Next, we move to a report on the town fire. And it appears this has been neglected for thirty years. Turn it over to you. If you've got any, how to similar report. Don't. Any questions? All of the four. Does council have any questions? So I'll, do you want the resolution over there, Council person? Let's go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Parsons, second by Council Lucian. With an amended, amended resolution, that report, C S twenty-five dash zero three six, titled Report on Town Cryer Appointment by Law and Remuneration We Received as Information. And B, that the town prior, he paid one hundred and fifty dollars for each approved function beginning January first, twenty twenty-sixth. And that that cycle can be adjusted each year by the consumer price index. And yeah, that's my motion, I'll speak to it if I can.
Go ahead.
The reason for that is it's been some twenty or more years since our town prior was taken on that job and offered a hundred dollars, or I think it was a hundred dollars. Sorry, it's fifty, it was bad. And never been adjusted. So it needs to go up. And there's been a comparison of other municipalities that that I believe the amount I've put in this resolution, one hundred and fifty, falls within, within what we've seen in those, those, that survey. And that we don't fall behind again by putting in some adjustment for people to the C P I on an annual basis. Thank you.
Thank you. That means an excellent recommendation. Has not any problems? Down here.
I just want to give comments of praise. We've had the same town crier, Brenda has been doing this since nineteen ninety-five, I guess it's thirty years.
Thirty years.
And I don't know, she was probably eight years old when she started. She, I've heard other town criers, and I've heard Brenda many times. And we're so proud of her for what she does for our, for our community. She does her research. And other town criers that I've heard, I'll put Brenda against any of them at any time for, for the quality and the confidence she has and the pride that she has in this community. So thank you for watching, Brenda. And if you're not watching and somebody knows it, tell her that council has hundred percent words of praise for what she's done for this community. And well in the future, don't stop.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I just want, I want to say again, she, when I spoke to her about this, she didn't, didn't even want this to be initiated. So I just want to make it very clear that it was me that initiated this because it's like been a collat to for thirty years. So I'll just make that very clear again because she, she was very adamant that she thinks she loves what what she does. But it truly wasn't fair. So anyways, I think there's no further comments. I will call question, all is in favor. I'm not scared. B I A Board of Management appointment. I think this is pretty straightforward. Does council have any questions? Move, Council Lucian.
Moved by myself, second by Council Parker. That the report, C S twenty-five dash zero three seven, titled B I A Board of Management Appointments We Received as Information. And B, that staff who directed to present a bylaw to amend by law in twenty twenty-three dash zero one seven, being a bylaw to appoint directors to the board of management of the total unit, business improvement area.
We, from the council? All is in favor? So Carrie, points. Anywhere to thirteen point three point one, D I P plan subdivision, lifting of one foot reserve. See if this came out, anything to validate from the report?
You know, the high level mayor, remember the council listed normal housekeeping item to that the local reserves taken place to ensure that the property east of was not moved by the town. Could access that were opening servicing and fees in front of free access to services. That's no longer required since the town with land to any movies.
Thank you. Any questions from council? What's Parker?
Moved by myself, second by Council Rose. That report, E M one five dash zero three seven, titled V I P Plan Subdivision, lifting of one foot reserve and dedication as a public highway be received. And then the one foot reserve described as blocks eleven and twelve, plan forty-one M three eighty-one be lifted. And the bylaw, a bylaw be brought forward to dedicate blocks eleven and twelve, plan forty-one M three eighty-one as a public highway. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any documents required to effect for lifting of the reserve and subsequent dedication as a public highway.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Carrie, next offer to purchase clear view drive. See if this carries anything to add.
Yes, Mary, just. Yes, Mary, thank you. And this is the lands that were landlocked in the nine three drive, required by the town. Some metal, some past expansions, and these lands are essentially orphaned there. So find these lands will be some additional revenue to the town. Take these down to the books, and I will know that the one conditions of the offer is that the town now remove the scrap rush from their lot. But it would be fully at a buyer's cost. So just to help, so in terms of that, I wouldn't. I request that, and certainly to know that these would, our opinion, ever move the goal into the town, the local reserve and help refund part of the contribution from the vehicle instead.
Any questions from council? Well, so there. Where's that?
Thank you, moved by myself. Second by Council Spencer. That report, E D M twenty-five dash zero three, title purchase clear view drive, former railroad land be received. And that a bylaw be brought forward, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to enter an agreement on purchase and sale with future transfer, company limited, legal law funded, and to execute any documents required with respect to sale and transfer of former railroad land described as part one plan four one R seven six seven two. And that the next proceeds for sale be transferred to the economic development reserve.
Thank you. Comments? All is in favor? Harry. Next, offer to purchase portion of our name. See if this again?
Yes, Mary, thank you. These lands were recently considered surplus. One of these lands contain the driveway in favor of one property owner. Like rather deeply, essentially half, approximately five people go to one property owner, and remaining thirty-five people go to the other. And essentially, they're coming at the valuation, the, the land were valued at. And we pay the towns to also recommend that these, that so the adjacent programs, thank you.
Any questions? Council Lucian.
Moved by myself, second by Council Parsons. That the report, E D M twenty-five dash zero three nine, title offers to purchase portions of the remaining received. And B, that the, that bylaw to be brought forward, authorizing the mayor and clerk enter into agreements, purchase and sale, and to execute any documents required to effect the sale and transfer of portions of water lanes falls. A, I am clear and all are clear for approximately thirty-five feet near the salary, otter lane, funded lands. And B, town midnight and Cindy McKnight for approximately five feet of the northerly otter lane funded lands. Save it except for reneusement, registered and paid to the town of Tilsonburg. And C, that first thirty years fall for the town's valuation survey, legal costs, variable in addition to purchase price. And even proceeds from the sale will be transferred to the town hall reserve.
Any comments? All is in favor? Harry. Moving over to finance, creation of town hall reserve. Director, my name is, my name is Godfrey, from the report.
Thank you, my mayor. A number of processes and actions in the, of the council reports that refer to town hall reserve. This is just a housekeeping, just actually crewed by reserve. Or the reserve policy requires councils are capable to do so. And just consolidate all the numbers of it, fighting the report, link values or whatever they want in place.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Um, Council Parsons.
His worship, moved by Parsons, second by Council Lucian. A, the report titled Creation of Town Hall Reserve be received as information. And B, that the Director of Finance be authorized to create a town hall reserve and transfer all funds earmarked for the construction of or pertaining to a town hall in such, in such reserve, into such reserve, as outlined in report finance twenty-five dash zero three nine. And C, that reserve policy five dash zeros over five, being schedule A of bylaw twenty 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 dash zeros zero eight, be brought back to council at a future date, incorporating the creation of the new town hall reserve, plus any other adjustments proposed by the Director of Finance.
Were there any comments from council? All is in favor? Carrie. Were there any files? Okay, Carrie. Um, B I A, may I show follow up? Do we have anything to other time now? Are there any questions from council? No, Council Spencer.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
This is thirteen point four two, yeah?
Yes.
I'm gonna read a edited version. Whereas the audit has confirmed that all payments received relating to the six businesses named were properly accounted for and that no financial irregularities or wrongdoings were identified with, within the town, downtown Tilsonburg B I A Board of Management. Therefore, be it resolved that one council acknowledge and accept the audit findings as presented. Council direct staff to prepare and publicly issue a statement summarizing the audit's conclusions, reaffirming the concerns raised in the anonymous letter were unfounded based on the independent audit. Oh, I don't know what just happened there. Three, council further state its continued confidence in and support for the downtown Tilsonburg B I A Board of Management. And for a class of, council classify the anonymous letter as vexatious in nature, given that the allegations were investigated and determined to be without merit. And five, that this letter be posted on social media and our town website, and if I could speak to it.
Yes, go ahead.
This came from back in May. And there was a motion passed. And it was carried by majority, and the finance team and the town auditor investigated that costs paid by the town and therefore taxpayers. Board members of B I A have shared with myself that they have spent countless hours on retrieval of these transactions in which this took away time and resources and opportunity costs from them. The harassment led to two board members resigning and kept the B I A from fulfilling their mandate. Our B I A board felt frustrated and this, with that this extra, with this extra audit, as the B I A already had an audit at twenty twenty-four. And this was only a result of anonymous letter and no wrongdoings were found. I think it needs to be clear that our Board of Management for the B I A is not only business owners, but as well two accountants and one financial manager for the province. I also feel that the policy of responding to anonymity should be followed. There's a reason why this policy is in place. Otherwise, anyone disgruntled or targeting someone will be writing to us with no proof provided and vexatious content and cost more money. Thank you.
Well, any further? On council? Seeing none, all is in favor?
I don't think I had a second or.
Oh, then you can't put it on the floor, so we're in a second there. Council Lucian, you'll second it? So I'm gonna go back to being, okay, so what about Council Lucian? Can't, sorry, it was one, I missed it.
There was one other, just I might add. Sentence A of promotion or sentence A of the resolution that if we receive this information, I don't think was read. Just the suggestions that Council Spencer had. I didn't hear that if we received this information, but I need.
Counselor, did you have in there to receive this information? Counselor Parsons was asking.
I, I did have it written down. I'm not sure if I read it. Let me look.
Are you able to also email that? From the clerk?
I emailed it to, I didn't think there was three of you in it. So I emailed it to the other three counselors and to the clerks. I don't think I did, I don't think I did read the.
So, um, Council, our citizens, we would have to ask for an amendment. A friendly amendment to include Lucian as information.
I will do so.
So was, is the mover in the second or? I agree with Counselor Parsons, friendly amendment, receiving as information. And then everything else, like you read?
Yeah.
Second, you said.
Okay, thank you. Then we're good then. Perfect. Okay, now we'll call a vote. All is in favor? Carrie. Or W S ninety, by W S I D roommate? Did you want to validate anything from our work? Now, for some storage, council, Parker?
Moved by myself. Council Rose, the report, F I N one four dash zero four four, titled W S I D rebate, be received as information. And the Director of Finance be authorized to transfer the town twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four to W S I D rebate, to the factory stabilization reserve.
Does it have any questions? I promise I forgot to put the questions. Seeing none, all is in favor? Not scared. Oh, next there's a report regarding strong airpowers and the budget update. It seems like the more we find out, the more down the rabbit hole we go. I would just say that is a benign problem. Um, I would just say stat is been absolutely phenomenal, it's been a learning curve for everyone. I'll turn it over to the Director of Finance, if he has anything he'd like to highlight for the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, um, yeah, the mayor has noted, uh, um, this is a housekeeping item, uh, as we. Uh, receive more information around the implications of the changes to the strong mayor's powers. Uh, and in regards to this report, uh, two items in terms of receiving the budget binder, uh, in advance of public, publicly, uh, the reason. Um, and so the resolution to in order to do so. And then just a note that, uh, in terms of the item, uh, in relation to your conflict interest and the fair balance of the mayor, or conflict of the I A financials. With the process to address that within the, uh, the budget, with the council to, uh, pass a resolution to amend the budget. It's first meeting in January to add, uh, those, uh, paths back into the budget. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, just to sort of counsel's awareness. Um, we definitely want to give the budget to everyone in advance of everyone, which is, uh, which is January the second. And then the other thing to know is when we do with the binder, um, that even though that you have to do an amendment to bring the B I A. Into the budget, um, the number, the number is already included. Is included. Yes. To be, that'll depend on what council decides, but, um, there is financial one in the budget for it. And I will open the floor for any questions, if anyone has any questions regarding this report. Seeing none, Counselor Rose.
Thank you. Move on myself, and second from Council's touch, that reported the finance twenty-five dash zero four six title, strong mayor. Powers and twenty twenty-six of budget, how states their schedule of information and that in order to fulfill this role for. Say that one then.
Pursuant.
Pursuant to section five, two twenty-four of the municipal act, money zero zero, two zero zero one. And to exercise the authority to, one, make amendments to the mayor's proposed budget. And or two, potentially override the mayor's veto of any council amendments. Council request from the town clerk, the twenty twenty-six draft budget by December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Pursuant to R R O one nine nine zero, regulations eight two three, section three, due of the municipal freedom of information and protection of privacy. Thank you.
Thank you, any further comments from Council, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, and we move to sale of fleet assets. I have this report, and this is sale of fleet from, um, the town of Tilsenberg to Ardro, just to.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, all the information is in the report, uh, just to overall summary, uh, which is, is, uh. For desires to purchase the fleet from town, um, there's been conversations between the town and T H I, who are the directors and G I. Um, attached is a listing of the, of the actual budget units. Uh, with the dollars as recommended to be transferred to, uh, both fleet reserve and the tax rate stabilization reserve, uh, medium market features purposes.
Any, just counsel, how many questions? Um, counsel, this meeting.
Yeah, move on myself, second by Counselor Parsons. A, that report, uh, F I N twenty-five dash zero four seven, titled Sale of Fleet Assets to Tilsburg Hydrant. He received this information. And B that the fellow sale agreement between the town of Tilsberg and Tilsburg Hydrant for the sale of fleet assets. Effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, be approved. With the Director of Finance authorized to fix with signature there on two. And C that two hundred sixty-five thousand of the six hundred thousand in transfer to the fleet reserve earmarked for paid remaining principal and interest. On debt of sold assets and three hundred thirty-five thousand being transferred to the tax rate stabilization reserve earmarked for future to drive purposes.
Counselor, have any comments? All those in favor? Um. Carrie. Moving to, um, the Tulsa Energy, Battery Energy Story Storage Report. Sorry, it's gonna burn up here. This is a report from staff that council asked for, and we have our manager with us this evening. So I will, um, open the floor to council. Firstly, is there anything you'd like to highlight? And then secondly, I'll open the floor to council, is there any questions that we'd like to ask regarding the report? We weren't seeing any, so Counselor Parsons.
Move by Parsons, second by Counselor Lucien. The council received report five oh twenty-five dash zero two, titled Tilsburg Battery Energy Storage as Information.
Thank you. Any further comments from Council? All those in favor? Close, that's Carrie. Next, we move to operations and development, and this is about accessible curb ramp installation. And I see that you have the author of the report in the house. Um, is there anything that you'd like to highlight from the report? Or? Here's a secret. How to save your.
The, um. To the mayor. Your, your first pretty self-explanatory, just wanted to give a brief issue that back a couple, three years ago. Uh, the request came in for that central curve there, uh, to provide access to the, uh, the listed street based on, you know, the. Kind of the, um, Trans Canada Trail. At the time, there wasn't any, there wasn't any formal extension of the trail, so we had pushed that back so it can be that. Since the western subdivision is constructed, and there's actually walking path that, that certain updates the, uh. This, the pond, and is provided of the exterior access, uh, that request you back through again. And we looked at, looked at the scenario of the, put this gate over the bounds and they recommended it, so as well to. I got a taken brush in.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for? What's your? So we've gone from curving to having the P S O. Okay, so the P S O, that's with the overhead. Things like with the, like the flashing lights? Or is this a different, it's just a crosswalk?
It'll, it'll be, through the man, it'll be the crosswalk that will have the posts on each side with flashing lights. Um, and say, was it same as, that's what, uh, that's climbed it up and, uh, important town line. The overhead designation is not required, but some sort of pedestrian crossover is required to make sure it's a protected crosswalk. Once you put the accessibility, um, the accessible curb there and provide some crosswalk, you need to provide some protection for the, maybe even the crosswalk.
May I? Is this, is this funding, is there not, or this, this being additions, maybe?
Yes, and it, um. I can't afford it. The, uh. It is ten, one hundred property, regular assets.
That'll, that'll last right, I don't remember reading that, okay, thank you. All right, any further questions from Council? Then it's, the report says it's far enough away from the other one that it says there. Yes. All right. For Miss Dan.
Move on myself, and second by Counselor Parker. A, the report O P B twenty-five dash zero six two, titled Accessible Curb Tight Installation for the Town Line and Trans Canada Trail. He received this information. And B, that council supports the installation of pedestrian crossover level two type B, including a curb type. And C, that council recommends the funding of sixty thousand dollars for installation of pedestrian crossover level two type B, including third fact funded from a linear. Infrastructure reserve and the mayor's consideration of the twenty twenty-six project.
Any, any comments from Council? Yes, well.
This one worship, I live in the area watching the movement of pedestrians and bicycles and other types of vehicle, or. Scooters, I guess, that we use the past, it's very, very busy there. What I have noticed is, uh, is there's no way to go up on the curb without, without lifting your, your vehicle up or off that. People are riding down the sidewalk, and that's pretending a risk to pedestrians, and it's, it's a highly used pedestrian area, so I think it's a good thing. I, I think it's, it's needed, I, I use it myself, have a difficult time, um, being able to find a place to get up on that path, so, thank you.
Any, any further comments? All those in favor? Carrie. Municipal right ways was sent back to the planning board and, uh, came back. And, uh, Carlos, thank you for highlighting the report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, know the board of the new bylaw, uh, there is most of the question we received, the interpretation, and yet, Pastor, any question?
Counselor Parsons.
Yes, so thank you through worship, I'll give your worship to, uh, the director. But this, uh, it's a very, uh, good report you put together, and I know council sent it back for clarification. I just want to confirm that, uh, bicycles are on the road, not in the sidewalks, right? Bicycles are not gonna be in the sidewalks because pedestrians use the sidewalks. You are squared, but however, for the bylaw, uh, we don't have any, we're no productive, um. Bicycle sidewalks, so we don't have any, we don't have any means to, uh, to issue any, he gets something like that, not only by law. Have your worship? What I'm observing, again, is bicycles going down sidewalks. Basically displacing pedestrians and all, sometimes coming very close to hitting them. I, 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 I thought this might be a, this might be a policy that we could somehow. Get bicycles maybe where they belong and pedestrians where they belong, I think, I think it's a, a, a risk, but, um. Um, perhaps maybe the traffic committee will, will, will study that, I, I don't know. I do have a second question for the director. Um, and that is, we, uh, we saw a clarification that the author sent forward to council, uh. Prohibiting snow being pushed from persons' personal property onto a road, which is a good thing, but that they're doing that. I don't see anything there that deals with, um. Where people cut their lawns and push their lawn through their, through the machine on the road, or push their leaves on the road. I can tell you as a bicycle rider, and as a former motorcycle rider, wet leaves, wet grass on roads are very dangerous for cyclists, for two wheels. And I didn't see that in, in the, uh, in, in, unless I'd missed it, it's very word, very lengthy document, but, uh. Just as we shouldn't push snow on the road, we shouldn't put our grass, put these on the road, or our leaves on the road, especially when they're wet, they're very dangerous. Thank you, worship.
So to the mayor, um, this is a, it's a document that starts when we review annually, just to make sure that there is any, any more coverage that is included, removed from the bylaw. Um, this is the first thing on, on this document. Uh, obviously, we're not gonna be able to include everything that we would like to see, but as I said, as I mentioned, we thought we're gonna be reviewing this on an annual basis. And if there is anything maybe from the traffic committee, that, the recommendations, or from council or the other committee, we'd be happy to, to see that as an amendment to the future.
Reverend. May I ask that through you, to the clerk, that those two items that I raised tonight, we put on the traffic, uh, agenda, it's too late for this, this particular meeting, I think it's Thursday, but maybe the next one. As soon as it's, it's immediately waiting.
Maybe further, any further questions for Council? If not, Counselor Parker?
Move on myself, second by Counselor Rose, after report O P D twenty-five dash zero six three, titled Municipal Right Away, Bylaw Follow Up, He Received and Information. And that by law, during the use of municipal right away, in downtown Tilsburg, be permitted, count with her consideration.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Close, that's Carrie. Next, we move to assumption by law for cars, maybe, and assuming this is custody thing, do you have any thoughts on that?
Not obviously, so, I'll speak to him, uh, for receiving financial statements, uh, and all of that, except the exception.
Okay, any questions, just counsel, any questions? If not, Counselor Rose, sir, thank you.
Move on myself, second by Counselor Spencer, A, that report will be the twenty-five dash zero six five, titled Assumption Bylaw for Product Gate subdivision, please, when we receive as information. And B, that council will assume public service right away within the registered plan four one and two seven two. More particular described in subdivision, through the corporation of the town Tilsberg and York Corporation dated two twenty-four, twenty eleven. And C, that a bylaw to assume municipal works and services in the registered plan four one and dash two seven two, presented to council for consideration.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Close, that's Carrie. Uh, that trust keeping in the bylaw, is council having any questions, this, others keep, base two? See no questions, Counselor Parker?
Move on myself, second by Counselor Parsons, report O P D twenty-five dash zero five one, titled Assumption Bylaw for Product Gates, of the middle base. Do, he received his information. And the council will send public services right away within the registered plan forty-one and. More particular, we described with a subtle agreement between the corporation of the town of Tilsberg and Box. Two, three, eight, five, six, six, seven, I'm very aware of it, a, a March twelve, twenty nineteen. And that a bylaw to assuming municipal works and services in registered one forty-one and two seventy-two, be presented to council for consideration.
Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Close, that's Carrie. Um, next we move to the Kensington Bridge replacement, as some not so very good things. Uh, so I will turn it over to you. Um, it's moving along, that being not as quite as fast as we want to. And I'd really like for you to explain to the public, um, what the delay is in this regard.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um. Yes, uh, so few updates on the project. First, we still remain some budget, it's very new, news is not going back to the fight so far. Um. Uh, the big update, uh, that we provided today is, uh, now the completion of the bridge is suspected to be completed by mid-March. Um. After the project was awarded, and there were some, uh, drawings that need to be provided to the supplier to bring everything ready. Uh, there was some issues that we found with the supports for the bridge, um, there was an investigation that happened in the field. And there was some back and forth between designers and the consultant at the peritrons. That resulted in a, a number of weeks, or in four, five weeks, so went back and forth. Um, by the time that we get to an agreement on what was needed for the bridge. Um, and then to meet all information to the supplier that that's not. They're significantly in delay of probably two, three months, also because of the season, we're close to December. Um, now the great news is that the bridge is, uh. Is being properly created, so there is no delay, so that. The, the main delay will be getting this force ready for the bridge. So, the bridge is expected to be, uh, on site by mid-January, that's when the, the supplier is going to start being over on it, so the bridge. But they still need final items supports, and then as soon as the supports are ready, they will start, uh, putting their team together. With a completion day of, of mid-March, so. That, that's it, I didn't want to provide to council, um, I mean, it's unfortunate. Having said that, it was a very aggressive timeline for completion of our pedestrian bridges that managed to, I think we owned, they, they were limited to four, five months. Um. There are any more, different month, but again, it's, um. So far, I think we are still on track to get that mid-March. I just, we don't see any other issues at this point. Um. On a, on a note, I guess, the T O, the T O also just prepared a little T O, but. Uh, we have seen some significant pieces of ridership, um, for the three months, uh, from August to October. Previous year, it was only five people using the service on lost stops. Now we have seventy-five people using the service now. Uh, with, it's a good promotion of the service and, and maybe cost about two hundred and fifty dollars that have been funded from the project, uh, for, for transit budget. But with anticipation of, that's, we will continue to be free until, complimentary until the bridge project opens up. Which is now potentially, uh, the April marshal, the April. Uh, once we made that, it's going to be small promotion to the service there.
Thank you, well, but, Carrie, people are doing the best. Um, so it was really, um. Keeping the heritage features, the stone, the stone buttons on the bottom that, that have created some issues with designs, is that correct? Just to, to so the community has a full understanding that we're trying to preserve the. Just so the community has a full understanding that we're trying to preserve the heritage feature and that really causes issues. Okay, thank you. Um, the other, does council have any questions? Council persons.
We just, if I could ask the director, I think, who's in the report, so the community knows when you. And unfortunately, we have some delays, but it's good things are worth waiting for and won't be long, but you stress the financial implication. Of the delay based on what we approved for the project.
Uh, so a some addition we forward to the mayor. Uh, so far, there is no implication, big implication provided. We are still on budget. And we was approved and their projection that we had is we will be still in budget until we are on progress. These delays, they don't have a meeting pattern, that on the body that was approved, was still uh within the numbers.
Thank you, worship. So whatever's on people. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Um, any further questions? I have one question. Um. The bridge is being constructed in Canada. Is it in Canada?
Yes, that is correct.
And do you miss the music playing on still?
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Um, any further questions? Seeing none, council persons.
Move by Carson, second by counselor Louisiana. The report will be the twenty five dash zero six six titled Vincent Bridge Replacement Project. Thor grass update, they receiving this information.
Any further comments? All those in favor? Carrie, I'll now turn the chair over to Counselor Lucy Anne.
Thank you. Uh, moving to thirteen point eight, top of point one, B I A memorandum of understanding. Um, this. Whether the. Director of. Director of Recreation, Hope, where parks, that the.
Thank you through you, Chair. Um, this is a um agreement for the uh B I A and the town. So the agreement that we currently have ends on December thirty first, so we're just looking to renew the agreement. And there are a few additions, including additional um. Requirements for reporting on finances at the end of each year as well as um. The B I A has added in some additional funds for things like. Um, dealing with remediation of social issues and tobacco management and recent management. So. Uh, there are a few additions. Um, the the cost has increased for their request. Um, which will be dealt with at the time of the budget amendment that council can put forward. So. Uh, really, this is just in principle approving the agreement to move forward with the B I A uh from twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Parker. Thank you. We're counselor Lucy Anne. We move by Carson, second by counsel Parker, that report R C P twenty five dash zero five two titled. B I A memorandum of understanding, you received this information and being the council improvement principle that grows twenty twenty six, twenty twenty eight, B I A memorandum of understanding. As attached to report R C P twenty five dash zero five two and C that the proposed twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight, B I A memo you be deferred. To the twenty twenty six budget deliberations. Thank you. Any discussion? All question, all in favor? Carrie. Want to care back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilman. Same. We have some need to consideration advisory community nights, council partner.
Move on myself, second by counsel Rose. The counselor Steve following advisory committee that says information needs advisory council on November fifth, twenty twenty five, museum for all of your heritage, except for the words. Meaning November ninth, sixth, twenty twenty five.
Council, any questions or comments? All those in favor? Carrie Downtown B I A Work Management Minutes, Councilor Rose Hart.
Thank you. We're going to stop September tenth at the end. The council received the downtown board of management minutes stated October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Carrie. O P T. Councilor O P T attachment board minutes, uh, council Rose Hart.
Move on myself, second by counsel Parsons. The council received the offered O P T government board minutes stated October fifteen, twenty twenty five, the information. Thank you.
What's their comments from the downtown? Yes, don't get me married.
Just noticing the October fourth crammed the cruiser at nine hundred and thirty pounds. That must have been an oversized cruiser. Good for them for doing it. Thank you.
Thanks for noticing. They're very successful. Um, the police got a lot of support when they do so. Any further comments? All those in favor? Carrie. Next, we move to bylaws, council Lucy Anne. Oh, sorry, notice of motion. Thanks. Any notices, motions? Seeing none? No. Council.
Move on myself, second by counsel Parker, that the following bylaw be read for first, second, third, and final reading. And the mayor clerk P and hereby unauthorized to sign the same place of corporate seal there on two. Bylaw twenty twenty five dash one zero six. Twenty five, twenty twenty five dash one zero seven, twenty twenty five dash one zero eight, twenty twenty five dash one zero one, twenty twenty five dash one one zero. Twenty twenty five dash one one one. Twenty twenty five dash one one two, twenty twenty five dash one one three, and twenty twenty five dash one one four.
Thank you very much. Any comments? All those in favor? Close that's Carrie. Next, we move to confirm proceedings by law, council partner.
Move on myself, second by counsel Rose, that by law twenty twenty five, one one five, we confirm proceedings of the council meeting held. On Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty five, we read for first, second, third, and final reading. And then the mayor and clerk E and are hereby authorized to sign the same place of corporate seal there on two.
Thank you, all those in favor? Let's carry. We are going to do findings of public interest and I'll start with you, Counselor Spencer online. Thank you. And I'll move to that here.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to uh say to everybody and call the town clerk and the deck down to us for a year. They appreciate it. Uh, please folks, we're not drinking dry. There's tab we can get and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Yep, I'd uh like to echo the sentiments of council Rose Hart. Uh, in this time, um, that number of imperates uh has been on an increase. I know Mary meant that last meeting. Uh, so please don't go and get dry during the holiday season anytime, actually. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. So thank you.
Um, this the.
I don't know, Andrea. I think every.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to let the community know that the outdoor rink is not open. Um, so please do follow the rules that are posted. If the red flag is up, that means that the ice conditions are poor. Please do not go on the ice. Uh, we work hard to maintain those conditions. Um, and there are free supervised family state times, um, where no packs and sticks or ramps are permitted. So please also follow that. Um, and that's just for the safety of those on the ice. Thank you.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and all the best this is today. Thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The community staff are one of the leaders. Thank you so much.
Hey, um, I have a couple things. Firstly, I'm going to start with the staff. Um, sitting next to me is our acting deputy clerk Amelia. And unfortunately, this Amelia's last meeting. She has taken a decision with the township of Guam. And to be the manager of legislative services and slash municipal court. It is truly with a heavy heart that I inform the public of this loss to the town of Tussamur. Amelia, it has been an outstanding employee and absolute pleasure to work with. And I truly feel without a shortage of stick on the scale. So the township of Guam is very lucky. And then um I'm just going to read my Christmas message, um, because part of it's the staff. Um, that's going to be even the newspaper um before Christmas. As we gather with family and friends to celebrate the Christmas season and welcome the new year. I want to extend my heartfelt wishes to every residents and every resident of the town of Tussamur. This is the time when the spirit of giving and caring in community shines brightest and once again, our town has shown just how strong that spirit is. I want to express my deep gratitude to all our volunteers, service clubs, community organizations who give so generously in their time. To every committee member has provided thoughtful input and recommendations to council throughout the year. Your dedication is insight, help ensure that Tussamur continues to grow, adapt, and thrive. I'd also like to acknowledge the incredible efforts of our town staff. Who work diligently behind the scenes every day to bring council's priorities to life. Whether maintaining our parks, public spaces, supporting local programs, ensuring our roads and infrastructure are safe. Or or providing essential services that our residents rely on. Their professionalism and commitment keep our community running smoothly. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated team serving the town of Tussamur. We know this year has brought economic challenges for many families. Yet in church Tussamur fashion, our community has rallied around those who need the most support. A special thank you goes to our helping hands food bank and to all the organizations, churches, and individuals who work tirelessly to lift others up. Your compassion carries the spirit of the season well beyond the holidays and reminds us what it means to care for one another. As we look forward to the year ahead, may we continue to embody the kindness generosity in the hope. From my family to yours, I wish you a very, very Christmas and a happy, healthy new year. And with that, this is our last meeting and when we return, it's a budget meeting in current. The seventh with. And we have council on the. Mexican's meeting. Is the twelve. Budget on the seventh and also on the twelfth. There is also a merit levy um being posted by the Tussamur District Store Society. At the Anamale House on January eleventh. So you can watch that. I'll do it in a paper as well. And uh, good night.
One more.
And we have to close out the meeting. Council Rose Hart.
Next, Madam Mayor, move on myself, second by counsel Spencer, that council meeting of Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty five, be again at. Eight oh two teen M. And everybody be kind and enjoy the new year. Thank you.